Looks like we are pretty close to a full house. I appreciate everybody coming out, especially the candidates. I'm gonna have each candidate can introduce themselves. They have three minutes. Then we will ask a series of questions. I'm providing the first question. And I'm trying to take as many questions from the audience as we can. I think I'll be able to get most all of them in. So do me a favor, no cheering, no cheering. Wait till the end, okay? We all support these guys, all three of them. Let's let them get through it and then cheer up your hearts now. All right, why don't we start with Josh? You drew number one. We have one microphone, so we're gonna share it. So bear with us. Josh, you go ahead.
Good evening. Am I kidding everybody to hear me?
Yes.
First, I want to thank God for letting us all be here together to talk about our city. I want to thank all of you for showing up. It's really important to be engaged. So thank you very much for coming. Thank you to the Island Island News for having us and for hosting us. Thank you to Forward Count Whoever's in and Forward Count Whoever's straightened for being here to talk about the issues. I see many familiar faces in the crowd tonight. I see some of you who I do not know. I hope tonight you can get to know me a little bit better. My name is Josh Loser. I'm a lawyer. I'm a College of Charleston graduate. And I'm a proud father of two Sullivan's Island elementary school kids. My family's roots go back to Isle of Palms since before Hurricane Hugo. When my great parents bought a house here in Los Angeles. After Hurricane Hugo, my granny donated a couple of palm trees along Palm Boulevard that you see today. So when I say my family's roots go back decades, I mean that literally in the ground, my roots go back decades. Created past last year, we had four generations of Losers living on Isle of Palms. Now we have three generations living on Isle of Palms. My parents, Ron and Lisa, live right across from us. My spouse, Nick, is here. Thank you so much for being here and for supporting me. And then my kids, Belle and John. So I'm not just running for city council. I'm running to fight for the home that I love and that three generations of my family live in. We have a lot of important issues. So I had a big platform and I've narrowed it down to four main issues. My first issue is to manage the growth and the development on the island. My second is to save our beaches. Our third is to balance the budget. And our fourth is united we thrive. I hope to manage the growth and the development by implementing reasonable short-term rental reform. I also hope to eliminate parking, additional parking within Wild Dunes gates, outside of Wild Dune gates. We have enough parking on this island as a. I hope to save our beaches by having a proactive, sustainable plan for funding and re-nourishment with vegetated dunes and dry sand beaches. Or balance our budget, the growth of our expenses exceeding the growth of our revenue. And we need to implement revenue-saving measures to make sure that our balance, our budget is balanced and finally united we thrive. We went through some divisive elections. I was part of one. And we need to move past that. We are stronger together at one island. And I hope that I can be a valuable member of city council and I can help build this forward to a better future together. Thank you so much.
Hi, and thank you for being here and for being engaged. My husband and I moved here in October of nineteen ninety-four, so we are celebrating this month thirty years of living on this island. Through that time, we've always sought to strengthen our community. And for me, a big piece of that must been radiating the Isle of Palms community through. Partnering with the South Carolina Aquarium, we've engaged an active litter, excuse me, active calendar of litter streets, where we turn volunteers into citizen scientists. We collect and document our, and so we can tell that we've collected more than two hundred and fifteen thousand litter items since twenty eighteen. And that data helps us prevent pollution and also helps us engage our community. With strong relationships across the island, I won the most votes of eleven candidates in my first city council election. I served on city council from twenty eighteen to twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, and that was a really active period. We completed a major beach re-nourishment project. We did major drainage initiatives. We hired a police chief and a city administrator. Overhauling our public safety building and without top it out, we navigated COVID. At different points, I chaired the public safety and recreation committees and I served on the public works committee. I also developed a plan to create the environmental advisory committee that now involves residents with amazing expertise and energy. So I didn't run for reelection right away because I wanted to enjoy our youngest high school years. But I stayed engaged and for the past eight months, I've been serving on a community enrichment task force which is involving residents. And they keep recommendations for our island to thrive. And with this special city council election, I really feel compelled to help answer critical challenges for now and the future. That includes advancing proactive beach preservation and flooding resiliency projects. We have projected estimates of an avid foot of sea level rise by twenty fifty, and we need to get together, unified in addressing that and getting ready for it. So I have a communications career background, which is an excellent skill set for this role. I'm not sure if everybody knows that, but I worked most recently in software marketing, but started out as a journalist. Twelve years of experience with the Post and Courier, broke front page news, covered crime and disaster, tackled complicated issues. And as a reporter, you have to be ready to dial into any topic, talk to anybody and consider all sides of an issue, then communicate it back to the community. As council member, I developed a reputation for listening to people, digging into the details, taking a balanced approach to decision-making with the best interest of the community and the island in mind.
Good evening. I recognize just about everybody in this room. This is the largest crowd I've seen since some of the council being jonesed. Involved me last year. My name is Rusty Freeman. I've been a resident of this island since nineteen eighty-four. My wife Deborah was here tonight and my two daughters, Stacy and Cole. We have enjoyed living on this island the past forty years like you wouldn't believe. We're from the upstate and this is home. And we got here with you. We had arrived and I have to thank Deborah and my girl was finally displaced. Because I was prepared to give the soda bill, yeah, so that we had the travel, so. I am a former member of city council. I was on council from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three. I was mayor pro tempore for twenty twenty-two. I chaired the real property committee, the public services, the facilities committee, which is in the real property committee, public works. I chaired that as well and also served on the recreation committee as part of the public service facilities committee. So I've done a lot of things in regards to council over the four years that I was on there. I have also spent some time on the administration committee. And during that time, I got really involved with the Mississippi Association of South Carolina. And I went through all their advanced courses and graduation. I think I'm probably the only member, former member of council and current council other than Philip Pounds, who has that stage. So we went through that program together, Philip and I did. And those courses were challenging, but yet we did those and we really, it was really beneficial to us. In the community, I'm on the advisory committee for the Children's Hospital. Have been for ten years along my wife Deborah. I served on the Lovello Executive Committee. I served on the Low Country Food Bank Executive Committee for ten years. I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about my priorities as we get into this. Because I have four major priorities I want to address separately. But anyway, I'm here tonight to state the facts to you. Give you the reasons why you should help me get elected to be council member for this state chief. Thank you.
All right, let's get right into it. Josh, you'll have the opportunity to answer this first. Now I've got a plethora of questions sent in from you guys. So your question may not be the exact one I ask. I'm trying to put it together the best as possible because I have seven questions on this, this one alone. Historically, the ratio of primary residents, secondary homeowners and homeowners in short-term rentals has been accepted at one-third, 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 which supports the vision of a comprehensive plan as a barrier island, as the premier barrier island residential community. What is your position on short-term rentals? Would you be in favor of forging a compromise with all sides and how would you do that?
All right, let's get right into it. Okay. So I've heard the talking line, one-third, one-third, one-third. What you don't hear is the impact on city services of short-term rentals. And when you have one-third, 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 it's easy to say, well, we have single-family homes, for example, that are counted as one. But what happens when a three-bedroom single-family home is torn down and turned into a five-bedroom single-family home? That's more heads in bed. That's more impact on our city services. To my knowledge, we don't have any statistics or we're getting them right now to see what the impact of the construction and the tearing down of the home. But I'm going door to door, every single person that I'm talking to almost is talking about this issue. So for those of us who think that this issue is put to bed, I'm sorry, it's not. We've got to have comprehensive short-term rental reform. I've been very vocal on this issue. Of course, I want to have a compromise, but we have to have reasonable facts. There's a lot of people who are making money off the dirt on this island and I support that. But at the end of the day, I'm running on a residence-first platform. So I am for short-term rental reform. I am for reasonable regulations of short-term rentals. And I'll tell you a story that I went door to door just this weekend. I went to the Forest Trail neighborhood. And there is somebody who lives in one of the cul-de-sacs in that neighborhood. And she was telling me that, hey, my neighbor that used to be a resident, now it's a short-term rental. Don't mind that we had a bachelorette party and all these balloons were popping. But at the end of the day, there's more traffic in our neighborhood. There's more maintenance cars. There's more people that are picking up the laundry. So this issue is compounded and I think that the statistics are misleading quite frankly. So I hope that we can all work together and we can value short-term rentals. Nobody wants to ban short-term rentals, but if we do, then you can move forward in a positive direction on this issue.
So Elizabeth Kenso encouraged me to run in this special election, not because we agree on everything, but because she respects my perspective and my approach to issues. She obviously was a key piece of the push for a cap on short-term rentals. And she knows that I voted against that question in the referendum because I don't believe any condos should be included in an STR cap. And the number of the sets for the cap in the referendum was lower than the number of existing STR licenses, obviously problematic. And I believe others voted against the referendum for some of these kinds of reasons. At the start of this election, it honestly felt too early to revisit that issue. But I soon found people on both sides asking me for my position all the time. So for transparency, I'm answering this for now and for the next three years. While there are other critical issues that I believe need our attention right now, I'm open to a conversation on an STR cap that just focuses on neighborhoods with houses where concerns about livability and lots of neighbors due to STRs are the most heightened. But the earliest I would want to even start that conversation would be next summer after we finish the fiscal year twenty-six budget process. But if the, if the city pursues an STR limit, I would want a balanced, common sense, well-vented plan. All condos should be left out. They're already done with the lay rentals. Any cap should be set with plenty of breathing room from the existing number of STRs and included areas. Without being restrictive, plans should send a message to STR developers that we have a limit that you will hopefully never reach. As supported in comprehensive and strategic plans, the city should be protecting residents' quality of life from the potential negative impact of long-term rentals. Preserving the residential character of this island is valuable to many of us personally, but it also contributes to the value of our colonies.
Thank you, Susan. Well, I think most of you just moved over. I've stayed in the STO for a minute. I was firmly against it last year when I was on council. As a resident, I voted against the app. I continue to oppose any cap on the STO on this island for enough reasons. I think we've got a good balance for the past couple of decades. It hasn't slayed very much off. It basically is one-third short-term rentals, one-third primary homeowners, one-third second homeowners. It's also the second home to the short-term rentals are the engine along the Wild Dunes that helps fuel the economics of this island. It brings a lot to the coffers. Do we want to do anything to affect the goose that laid the golden egg? No. I think what we do is we work on better enforcement where it's needed and look at it that way. In regards to, let me, let me say this also. If you look at the livability statistics that are published every month, we have very few noise complaints. We have very few short-term rental complaints. You know what the biggest complaint is we have on livability? Rollback carts, you know, carts that are left on the side of the street. I agree with that. We got, yeah, yeah, we shouldn't have that. But short-term rentals themselves are not the evil thing that it was made out to be. When everything was going on with the referendum last year, there was never any reason to do anything more than what we were doing. That was monitoring the situation, making sure that we knew what short-term rentals were and what the trends were. And we've known now investors cannot invest on this island now with the price of dirt down here. Not to mention a house and the limitation of twelve people in these homes. Where would they get a return on investment? We cannot owe investors that are blocking out here just because we're the only municipality around here that doesn't have a cap. So I'll dispel that to, to, I, thanks.
That you want to rebuttal? Yeah. Okay, one minute. So since the referendum, which I'm the only candidate to sign the petition, we have had decreased residents. We have increased trash and garbage collection. I think when I was a kid, we would have week-long rentals. I would meet people every week from different places and with their families would come down for a week. Now with Airbnb and VRBO, people are running it for the money. I just did a ride-along with Chief Cornet on Pride Day and he was telling me that crime's increasing because the rates are going down. Some of them are fifty, sixty dollars a night these short-term rentals. And so this is a real issue. Nobody wants to ban short-term rentals. But if our residential population is decreasing, we've got to do something. And I'm running to act. I'm not running to do nothing. I'm running to act and this is one of the issues I'm running on.
I've got two more questions. We've got some more questions related to that. Let me start with you, Susan. This is the next question somewhat related to that. From July through September, residents have had twice as many noise complaints as short-term rentals. Given those numbers, do you believe that there's a livability problem with short-term rentals? If so, explain why and how these problems differ from full-time residents.
Well, obviously we're neighbors. So a noise complaint from any of, that's involved a neighbor or a short-term rental is all something that should be enforced and pursued. And hopefully our neighbors will be neighborly and, and be good to each other. But I think that beyond just the question of nuisance of a short-term rental potentially posing, which I've heard plenty as I talk to boers about specific issues they've had next door, across the street or around them. It's, it's not just the nuisance or the noise. It's also the potential loss of neighbors and neighborhoods that people are concerned about. Especially when you have short-term rentals kind of creeping down the street where they didn't use to exist before. And certainly lots of times those, you know, neighbors or their situations are fine, but there's definitely hot spots. And if you have, start to have, be surrounded by short-term rentals, as I spoke to one resident who's lived here since nineteen sixty-nine and has seen his, his street change that way. For him, it's, it's a loss of feeling like they have somebody next door that knows them, that's going to be a consistent friendly face and, and a comfort and a community.
Thank you, Susan. Well, I test on this on my masthead, sir. Let's just reinforce it again. Livability complaints that we get by and large are very, very low. Anything related to pest咬ers, whether it be noise, whether it be the number of vehicles, you name it. It's just, it's almost, it's goose eggs almost across, across the chart if you see it on a monthly basis. And it is true that we have more residents complaining against residents than we do residents complaining against short-term rentals. So I, you know, I don't get why we all of a sudden, or not all of a sudden, over the past couple of years anyway, consider short-term rentals on this island the, the bad guy, so to speak. You know, I don't think, I don't think we have a serious issue on this island other than there are baby pockets. Where homes have changed, where it's gone from a full-time resident to a short-term rental. And maybe that has shifted in a particular neighborhood or a particular street. It happened on our street. But you know what? It's going back the other way now. Now we have more families and we have short-term rentals. And yes, we have a short-term rental beside us and two behind us. And you know what? They have been less trouble than some of the full-time neighbors I've had in the forty, forty years I've been on the islands. You know, it's, I just don't see an issue here that, it's like a solution looking for a problem, my thing. Short-term rentals, again, are really part of the lifeblood of this community. In terms of the economic value it adds to the island's coffers. You take that away, you miss the chance of your property taxes going up. And I don't see that. I'm good at paying less taxes at Sullivan's Island and some of these other communities around here. And I don't see a reason for a cap. You look at Caus, you know, look at Folly Beach and what it's done to their economy. Just go and look at the real estate banks and say install it.
Okay, I have two minutes on this one, right? So the question is about noise. I would much prefer to have a noisy neighbor than somebody coming in and out every other day. Like I said, we used to have week-long rentals. Now you can rent for a couple of nights. And here's the thing. I, at the end of the day, do not want to ban short-term rentals. I don't think anybody in their right mind wants to ban short-term rentals. But at some point, we've got to have a limit. Do you want neighbors? I want my kids to grow up on a street with other kids. My street that I live on used to be rentals. Now it's all full-time residents for the most part. There's one rental and it's right next door to us, okay? I don't mind it. I understand where we live. But we've got to have this conversation. We can't stop fear mongering that all of our property values are going to go down if we have limitations on short-term rentals. And here's the thing. When I was on that ride-along with Chief Cornet, we went on a couple of calls. One was a barking dog, okay? And I said to him, I said, do we have problems on this neighborhood, in this neighborhood that cannot be solved? And he said, no. And he said, we don't mind going to the noise complaint. We don't mind doing this because this is what preserves your neighborhood. The problem is, is when you have issues that are uncontrollable or there's, there's this thing in the room that you can't touch. You can't have any solutions. We've got to move forward from this conversation. Nobody wants to ban short-term rentals. All we want to do is preserve our residential community. So my kids, your kids, your grandkids can grow up with neighbors, with residents, with a community. We are reaching almost forty percent right now of short-term rentals. At what, is there, is there a limit? Is there no limit? I don't know. Maybe we should have the conversation about what restrictions we should put in place. If it's not a cap, the residents voted on a cap, okay? Construction's going up. The rate of construction's going up. Are we going to tackle development? Are we going to have affordable housing on this island? Are we going to let out-of-town investors come up, buy all these homes above market value, tear them down and build five, six-bedroom mini hotels? That's a question we should have.
Thank you, Leah. Yeah, I would have one minute rebuttal on this because it wanted to address noise a little bit more too. We spent the better part of the last two years trying to determine the decimal levels if we could all tolerate on this island. It went nowhere. Basically, the end of the day failed. Nobody could agree on it. What's, what's the decimal? Fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five, seventy, seventy-five. We couldn't come to a agreement. If you look at the livability complaints, the chart that I go back to, it's statistical. You can see very clearly that of the complaints that we have, of most of them, almost none are silent. And most of them are unvalued and very few are liked. You know, we just don't have a situation here where there is a, where there's a huge problem. I go back to Folly Beach and their property banks and say install it. They own a town over there. And many people in the real estate business have dealt with a lot of mess in this area. And I have, have other people that cite little municipalities that have caps. Well, I think Mount Pleasant does, maybe in the old village, but that's historic. So that's a historic area. They should, they should monitor that potion.
Um, well, I'm surprised to hear Mr. Streetman say that they failed after so much time to come to an agreement on a, on a noise ordinance. And I guess I, that doesn't seem like success to me. Especially since our police were asking for a noise ordinance so that they could really enforce issues that they were seeing. They were, they needed a tool to be able to register complaints as founded and know that they would be able to be held up in court. So I'm, I'm just surprised that that to me does not seem like success.
Rusty, this one will be for you. Something with you. The Isle of Palms is a popular tourist destination. How would you balance the needs of the tourism industry with those of the residents, especially regarding traffic, parking and congestion?
Thank you, Leah. Way out of balance these is this. I mean, we know that we're a destination island. People are just going to be here. No bad ones. We are a vacation destination. We know we're going to have the traffic. We know we're going to have the people. We're not going to have the edge betting. We know that's going to generate accommodation tax. We know that that's going to generate dollars that the cancer register for our businesses, the restaurants. You know, it's good for our chamber of commerce and our community to have that. But what we do need to have is we do need to have sensible enforcement of the ordinances we already have in place. So balance of these, what we need to do is just to make sure that we enforce the ordinance that is there. And we have adequate staff, our police department at the right times during the high season to make sure that we can make the traffic stops that are needed and that we can also attract it flowing. I think we've done a good job, but on the other hand, I think we could do better also. I'm personally pleased to see the outside agency that's handling our parking tickets, parking tickets. That they got off the beach service officers so they can spend time on the beach. I think that's a plus. But I think there's still a lot of work to do. I believe parking enhancements on Palm Boulevard would be a big, big win for us. I'd like to see us work more closely with XTDOD, get that in place and make a rather grand Palm Boulevard a thing of beauty out there. And a place where pedestrians, cyclists and also our residents and visitors can safely walk and bike to have a good time on beautiful boulevard. There's so many things that we can do to improve the beauty of this island and the, the balance of tourist activity wells. I think our chamber can be a big part of that as they, as they continue to grow. So that, I think, along with the council who is willing to work together and the residents, visiting to the residents, I think we can, we can make it happen so that it's groovy and more.
Josh, that's.
Okay, this is a big topic, so I'll try to get all of it in two minutes. Okay, so parking, one, I don't want any public parking in Wild Dunes. We don't need any more people coming onto the island. We have enough parking spots. In fact, I think the parking that's along Palm Boulevard between Fifty-third and Fifty-seventh needs to be eliminated. The only parking on Palm Boulevard that doesn't have the four feet back set, do you know those lines that everybody goes and draws on the, on the, the ground? And everybody gets all these expensive tickets for? Well, arbitrarily, apparently Fifty-third or Fifty-seventh, it's, it's okay. Well, arbitrarily, apparently Fifty-third to Fifty-seventh, it's, it's okay to open your car door into traffic coming out of all of the second Wild Dunes gate. Also, we need to have paid parking. Everybody is shocked when they come here and there's no paid parking. It's just free range. So when you have a budget that's strapped, maybe we should pay for some parking. Um, as far as congestion goes, the connector, we need to have two lanes going off of the connector. It is so disappointing that S C D O T restrike that connector without including the city. Um, if I was on city council during that time, I would have really tried to work hard with S C D O T. Uh, that relationship has strained, which on an island where almost all of your roads are controlled by S C D O T, that makes things really difficult. There's a new transportation secretary. Hopefully that's a new opportunity for us, but we need to work with our partners. And I think if we could have paid parking, eliminate parking where it's dangerous. And if we can work with the layers of government to achieve things, also short-term rentals and all of the maintenance cars and every, all of the, the vehicles that come on to service these short-term rentals. Maybe that's an area that we can look at. I think we have a lot of ideas, but I'm resident focused. That's going to be my primary focus when I'm on there on city council is how does this affect the residents? I want the businesses to make money, but we all live here and we all have to deal with that.
Well, I like to say that we live on another island, but we don't live in a bubble. And to your point about that, we'd love to see two lanes off the connector, exiting the connector and not just off the bridge, but continuing on into Mount Pleasant with properly timed signals so that we can get traffic flowing and prevent gridlock, which is truly unsafe through, backs up all the way. Sometimes a lot of Palm Boulevard, so to Palm, I mean, to Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-Sixth, you've got people zooming on the cross streets, um, lots of safety issues there. And, and to be honest, just huge quality of life issues for residents not being able to get places they need to go during those times. Sometimes we can predict it, but sometimes if there's a big rainstorm, we cannot. And then suddenly you can go somewhere for a couple of hours. I mean, I've literally talked to friends who it took them an hour to get from Wild Dunes to the Carls Teer on a busy day. So definitely appreciate two lanes off the connector, but to do that, we are going to have to work with Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant is our sticking point. We have coalesced around that opinion, but we need to get our, the, the leaders of Mount Pleasant, including their mayor, town council, to agree to it. And so that's, I believe I can help with that. I, I think we can help make that case that it's not just for residents. It's for all the people that come to the beach and can't get off quickly. That's a process issue. So there's, I mean, many things that we can talk about in terms of tourism. Uh, one thing is that we are pushing to market, uh, our family, feel of our island. We want to bring families here. We know that there'll be less impact most of the time and also more environmentally friendly. Those two things go hand in hand. We can successfully market that, um, and it'll be, they'll, they will help take care of the island when they're here.
Rusty, you have one minute.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, yes, uh, I did want to, uh, mention the parking issues one more time and the connector. Uh, on parking, I agree that we need to really totally look at all parking on the island. Let's from Palm Boulevard with some of the avenues beyond Forty-first. And just really take a look at that and see what's needed to make it official. It's a mess up there near this, near the gate that this Joshie makes. So I think there's work to be done there. I think with good planning, good collaboration, uh, we could look at some things that were, will, that will, uh, improve that greatly. As far as the connector, I also was supportive of the two lanes off of the connector. But you know the real sticking point on the connector? It's not Mount Pleasant, it's S C D O T. That's who is the real sticking point. We can try work with Mount Pleasant all we want and they probably would be resistant, but a few would get S C D O T. Maybe go along with anything Hitler had. So maybe, maybe an option is to restore the emergency lane, use it, the emergency lane. And then during the car, during the car, car shovel season, you know, use it on the weekends for the car, get to the, get the shovel to the bus more quickly, get more people over here.
She wants one minute, Elsa.
Um, well, I, I appreciate that, but my understanding from talking with the mayor that, that it was, it is primarily Mount Pleasant that is the sticking point. And, um, so I just wanted to clear that up. And I also wanted to say in terms of the parking area that you're talking about from Fifty-third to Fifty-seventh, Fifty-seventh to Fifty-eighth, where we have parking, that's actually key to Wild Dunes getting, uh, or was key to Wild Dunes getting about three million dollars, um, in, in the beach re-nourishment funding in the last, um, as I believe, um, in the last beach nourishment. We need to have that there. Uh, if we don't, uh, have parking available for the public, you're less likely to get state funding for the re-nourishment projects. And it's calculated by distance from where that parking is available, what area of each that you will be able to, to get money for.
Josh, you want that?
You, um, okay. So my understanding after talking to a resident, because that spoke on Fifty-third and Fifty-seventh happened and thinks after the funding for Wild Dunes happened. We can go back and look at that, but I'm pretty sure that that's not related. But you kind of stepped on a layer, I mean, I don't want to touch it, but I kind of want to. Um, we in Wild Dunes do not need to add public parking to give beach nourishment funding. And I'm going to leave it at that because I'm sure there's another question on it.
Hi, next.
All right, Josh, this next question will start with you. City faces sev- several capital projects like drainage, beaches, possibly a new town hall, in addition to increasing wages and operating costs. Do you believe the city has the revenue to fund all this? How would you increase revenue if made it, or reduce costs specifically?
No, if we had the money, we would have already done it, okay? And how do we get it? Well, one, we work the layers of government. We get grants, we reach out to the state, we all pay federal taxes. We should get federal money back for these, for these projects. They're very complicated. There's a lot of permits, um, and there's just a lot of work that goes into doing this and to securing it. Um, I commend city council, especially the ad hoc beach preservation committee, because I've learned so much about this city through that committee and how to raise funds. There's a lot of opportunities to raise funds from non-residents and from businesses. We can increase our business fees, um, we can increase our building fees, uh, we can increase fees that don't include any property tax increases. And that's where we should start first. That's the low hanging fruit. Second, we need to advocate at the state, there's a, there's a state lobbyist. Um, for certain projects, we can work with the water sewer commission. And I think the city council is, uh, exploring going in, in conjunction with them to get a federal lobbyist. So city council actually is, I have to give them a lot of credit. They're really being proactive on trying to get funding sources. There's a, there's a couple of council members that are really working hard on this. And I, I, I encourage you all to go through the meeting minutes. There's tons of charts and numbers and spreadsheets, um, from really smart people who are helping us along with this. But we have really impactful drainage projects. We have really impactful beach re-nourishment projects. And we have really impactful, uh, stormwater and sewage projects that need to happen. So we have money. We have about forty-five million in the bank, twenty-one million's restricted, but we don't have nearly enough for these projects. So we do have to remain vigilant. And the word that I have heard and I'm using now is aggressive. We have to be aggressive in getting this funding. And I pledge to work with the layers of government to get that funding so our residents don't have to have flooded streets, don't have to have a road and beaches.
And I, that's all.
Yes, uh, okay. City faces several capital projects, can you hear me? Uh, like drainage, beaches and possibly a new town halls. And in addition to increasing wages and operating costs. Have, do you believe the city has the revenue? If not, how would you increase revenue?
There's a lot going on in that.
Yes, there is. I got all on each bar, dude.
Uh, well, I'll take some pieces out. At the city hall, I, I believe, you know, true, we're probably going to have to spend some money on that, um, at some point. But I think we need to do that with as much fiscal restraint as possible. And, um, so I'm encouraging city council to just select an option for an updated or new city hall that makes sense financially and operationally without extra expenses. Um, so one way that we don't have to spend money, I mean, if we don't have to spend as much money, then we're doing better in the run, long run. But, um, yes, we have forty-five million dollars in the bank, uh, much of that, well, at least half of that is restricted. However, we can be using that, um, money, drawing from that money to do some of our, our, our projects. And I think that drainage is one area that we really do need to be directing funds toward. But we can also go to, especially right now, the environment is great for us getting federal grants, um, maybe worse so now than ever because of the concerns that we have without sea level rise. And certainly our community is facing that. So there, what I'm really advocating for too is for us to create positions for staff who are, uh, focused on natural resources and resiliency. And while that would add, um, some salary, that person's or people are going to make it up the difference by securing grant funding to pay for a lot of these projects. Um, they can focus on our beach preservation and drainage resiliency, help advance those projects, prevent us from making costly mistakes, secure grant funding, um, and, and push things along faster. So that's one investment that I think in the long run is going to help us save money.
Thank you.
Uh, well, let's have a little trusted up pieces to it, but yeah. Uh, there are, uh, capital projects and no, we can't pay for them all at once. You know, we have to take them, you know, we can run with it concurrently and do stuff, but we need to be taking it and looking at it realistically and sensibly and see, see what we can do now. Uh, certainly going after grants at the state level and federal level. We need to do that. I would be hard pressed to okay a new staff position just to go after grants unless it could be proven that they actually pay for themselves. Uh, but anyway, that being, that aside, you know, these, these projects are all going to be expensive, all of them. And they are going to take a lot of dollars, a lot of tax. Now, I very clearly in the last couple of months, since the issue came up about city hall, spoken publicly twice to the council about this. I am not in favor of a ten to fifteen million dollar price tag for a new city hall. I am in favor of renovating the city hall that we have. I think we can spend some money on that, surely need it. It really is. But, uh, private construction that estimated about three point six million dollars, uh, really fix it up into a nice place. I would go with three point six million dollars any day over ten to fifteen billion on a project like that. So wages, I'll, I'll do this in the, in the context of the employees, the elders out there. We need to do more to make sure that we're competitive with wages on this island, particularly for our public safety departments. We have a tough time now with retention, police officers, fire, fire. Uh, it's, it's competitive world out there. And every time we compensate them with more wage, just somebody comes over the top, you know? So we need to not only increase the wages, we need to increase, uh, you know, the toys they have, you know, so that they can learn more and, and keep them on the island so that they could be more attractive to stay here. None of them live on this island. They can afford to. So we just need to make sure we're looking at to be a more.
Anybody want a question? You want my? White parking.
Um, I think it's just interesting that, that Rusty this mentioned that we need to, to buy more toys, um, to be fair with our budget. Um, I do agree though, that we definitely need to be upfront and proactive on salaries. Um, we, we do so much by retaining staff, uh, that prevents the costly expense of retraining people. Uh, and we have so many great employees. We want to keep them here. I think it's great that our city has also learns that, you know, by, by bringing in maybe somebody who can have more experience, but want to slow down in their public safety career. We get, we get bonus from people like that. But, um, in terms of adding staff for natural resources and resiliency, um, the, the expense of not, uh, protecting public property. I mean, that, that investment is going to benefit the city at some, but also our residents in so many ways. So I, I, I think that's definitely an area where we have to invest, especially with the future in mind.
Yikes. Okay. So we have a lot of things that people want to spend money on, which is great if you don't have an island that floods every time that it rains and you don't have beaches and homes that are literally falling into the water. We have got to take care of our very outdated infrastructure before we do toys and resiliency people and all of these things. We don't live in a world where we have as much money in the city as y'all people think. We have a budget crisis here and everybody needs to understand that. These projects are not cheap projects. These projects are tens of millions of dollars. And we can't just keep sitting on our hands waiting for the state or the federal government to come in to save us. So I think we need to put our heads down, get to work. That's why I'm running it for city council. Let's balance our budget and then we can talk about the toys and the resiliency.
Guys, we have, uh, the next two questions will be, uh, basically beach questions. Uh, I'll sing here. Uh, the beaches are in poor shape across the island. What would you do to preserve our most important asset and protect residents and property from an ever-rising sea level? How do you believe that that should be funded? And I believe this is for Susan to start.
Oh, well, that's, that's obviously an excellent, um, question. And so at least, as we talked about, sea level rise and the flood by twenty fifty, and I'll be with that respected for you. Last nor'easter in December, imagine in twenty fifty having that with every king tide. That's what our consultant shared with us. That's what we're looking at in the future. That's what we need to get ready for. And that's not that far away. Projects for drainage and this, I, we did our phase three major drainage project that started when I, not on city council, we started talking about that. That was in twenty eighteen and we just finished it. We can't do those projects one at a time. We've got to get ready. Um, but in, in terms of the beach, um, we definitely have a serious erosion issues at both ends of the island, but we need to give immediate attention to. But we also got to continue working proactively to, um, get ready for major beach nourishment projects. And, you know, the understanding or the, um, the thinking is that every eight to 10 years, we're going to have to do a beach nourishment project. It's really going to be more than that. It's going to be more frequent later than that. We're already seeing that. So we have to get, wrap our heads around that. And the funding, there's, I appreciate that there's a special committee that's looking right now at all the opportunities for funding. For example, I think it's, um, wonderful that Wild Dunes has created a fund where real estate transactions result in a transaction fee that then is banked for future re-nourishment projects. They, they banked, um, millions of dollars so far, far in preparation for their next re-nourishment project. It'd be great if I was, could do that as well. However, that requires going to the state lobbying them to give us permission because Wild Dunes is a, um, separate private entity. They have hardly way to do that. We will have to work with legislators to get that permission to do that. But could be a way for us to get millions more in our coffers for each preservation.
Hey, thank you. And it's us. We have a seven mile long island here with a beautiful beach and we have two hotspots right now. From either end of a drumstick, drumstick shake barrier out. Not unusual to have hotspots in your islands. And that's what we have right now. Yeah, we have it at both ends at this point. Usually it's one or the other. And, and quite honestly, I've seen it more over my forty years here up at Beachwood East than I've seen down on this end. It is a problem. It's what do we need to address? I think the work that the beach administration, ad hoc committee doing, this doing is great. I think the revenue strange, thank goodness, that they've been, uh, uh, looking at and, uh, been trying to consider are very good. Uh, there's very few of them. It looks like it's under, totally under the island's control. Uh, some of them are state and devil dependent and some of them are dependent on wild things also. But they are making a good effort and I think that they are going to be able to make some progress when they're ready to go and present what they come, come up with out of the ad hoc committee. But they are making a good effort and I think that they are going to be able to make some progress when they're ready to go and present what they come come up with out of the ad hoc committee or council. Um, we should have a proactive plan for beach re-nourishment and beach nourishment. There's no doubt about it. But let's face it, problems we have are more at the ends of the island than the center of the island. I lived at the beach spot for twenty seven years and I was lucky enough to buy a house in the center of the island that had no, it was green. It's a. And I know I was lucky, but I lived there five years after you do. And I could still see the sand fencing right outside my backyard. And so I know when you get the really big storm, it's still a level everything. Nothing's going to survive doom wise. So we do need to have a proactive plan to make sure that along with any federal funding and state funding, we get with a disaster storm and we're able to be proactive and do the work on our beaches as much as we can ourselves. And then really go after the state assistance. We have nobody working for us.
Be Columbia right now. Am I sit that doing the same look?
Okay, so we need to all ask ourselves, are we going to let nature continue to run its course or are we going to save our beaches? I think you know where I stand. I want to save our beaches. Not only does it impact our tourism economy, but we all live here on an island to go to the beach. Otherwise, you can live somewhere else. So I think it's interesting, the inlets obviously are waterways and sand is moving. But Beachwood is not on an inlet. That's right by the Grand Pavilion. So when tourists come to Wild Dunes and they walk along the beach and they see homes falling into the water, do you think that they're going to want to come back? No. What about our short term rental owners who I support and I don't want to ban short term rentals because it helps our economy? What about when they have a beachfront home and they rent it out to somebody and then there's no beach in front of their house? I'll tell you what happens. They have to refund them thirty percent of their profits. So that impacts our economy. And how do we pay for it? Well, we can identify local sustainable solutions or we could give control up to the federal government. In order to do that, you're going to have to spend three million dollars on a study just to see if it's feasible. And then you're going to have to work through Wild Dunes, other parking in Wild Dunes, work through the H O A board there. Or we can have a private public park initiative where we spend the money that I paid into into Wild Dunes. And I'm wondering why it's not being spent to this day. And the beachfront owners can also pay into money into a local fund to keep it in local control. We have got to be aggressive on this issue. Our homes are literally falling into the water. Go walk along the ends of the island. It is going to shock you. Don't believe what you're hearing from people or what you're reading. Go with your own eyes and look at these homes. We have got to do something. And I am committed to doing it. I want to be elected to act, to do something, not to just sit there and and talk platitudes, but to actually roll my sleeves up and get to work.
Thank you, guys. Um, last question on the beach for right now. Do you feel it's in the best interest of our beach community to build front beach seawalls to protect private property?
This starts with Rusty. The best.
So I can like.
Just back, let's just. That's fine. I'm good with the question. Uh, I'm in favor of saying of following nineteen eighty eight beach fund management plan one hundred percent. That's the law. Anybody that breaks that law by building a legal sea wall needs to be held accountable. And bounce hit him. You go the right channels and you go after litigation in the right way or approach it in the right way. I'm fine with that. Everybody to have a difference of opinion. Uh, when we break the law that's already in place, we're doing something we should not allow. Hold this out.
Right.
It's not, it's not filthy for us as a community and it's not the right thing to do. You look at the nineteen eighty eight beach fund management act, it clearly bans seawalls, bunkheads, jennies. Except very rare situation, very rare cases, you have to go through the proper steps. You can't just illegally place a seawall somewhere, you know, and then affect the dry sand beach around you. The dry sand beach is for all of us, residents, visitors, all of us. I sympathize and empathize with the beachfront holders that may have a need for a wall. Thank goodness I never had to have one for an, or even had to think about one. But still, they need to follow the law, go through the proper process and let it and see how it's determined as to what they are allowed to do or not. I don't have a problem going forward. We work out a plan. Someone wants to protect the foundation of the home, landmark of the critical line. I'm fine with them burying a seawall and covering it with vegetation. But that's, you know, that's something that I could live with. If you go out and put a wall that affects your neighbor's property, causes erosion on either side, up and down the beach, and elevates the dry sand, I'm not in favor of that.
So Josh. And if.
Yeah, I'm pleased.
Who was?
Okay, so I'm not a scientist. I'm a lawyer. And I will let the courts decide whatever lawsuits are out there with private property owners. However, I believe in private property rights and I don't think the state should be allowed to arbitrarily draw lines and then when a storm comes up, they say, oh, that's mine now. And there's a real question, and I've talked to basically every single person on city council about this issue. There's a real question about whether we allow the setback line to go in the middle of where a pool is, where the foundation of a home is. I mean, those are the conversations we're having right now. It's what do we let fall on the wire? Do we let the pool fall in the water? Do we let the home fall in the water? Do we let the person protect their home? They shouldn't have even built the house there to begin with. So who cares? I mean, the the thing with that is is these homes are built. They're there and they affect all of us. If one of those homes fall into the water, all of our insurance costs, which are already hard to get to begin with, are going to go up and it's going to be a blight on our community. Everybody knows about the home that fell in the water in North Carolina. That'll be the home that fell in the water of Isle of Palms. And if we don't let these private property owners protect their property, what are we doing? So I'll let the courts decide whatever issues there are, but I'm for protecting private property. And I'll leave you at this. I went to the beach re-nourishment committee meeting on Friday. It was so enlightening. I encourage all of you to catch up on this. This is an important issue that affects all of us. Folly Beach has on this federally managed program. And the federal government takes along between projects that the person that was showing, that came up for Folly Beach said the only thing that's getting these property owners through are their seawall. I've dropped my belt. We have an ordinance, a local ordinance that's more restrictive than the state law. Why? Why is that? Why are we getting in the way of private property owners? That's a good question. It's something that y'all should ask yourself.
Who would that? Um, and I went to that same meeting and I I don't think that's the message that I completely heard from the Folly Beach representatives um who are working and they have uh Army Corps of Engineer assistance, which is working Berlin now. They've had a long history together. Uh, some of it's been rocky, but and that's primarily what they were there to talk about was the Army Corps of Engineers and how that has helped them. Um, they are actually having in a regular rhythm down Folly Beach now of each re-nourishment projects to where then once they finished one, um, they're already planning for the next one. So that would be a plus in terms of the Army Corps of Engineer, but that also comes with a lot of potential cons, um, bruising control of over here. Um, as we've already seen with the Army Corps of Engineer kind of falling down on what they promised to help us with recently. Um, but in terms of seawalls, uh, so we've got the serious erosion uh issues at both ends. I've blocked both ends with property owners. I I really feel their frustration and stress. Um, and at the same time though, I understand that we have to be very careful and not harden our beaches with seawalls and jennies and additional things. We have to be very careful about that because of the effect that it has on neighbors as well as the the beach that is seaward of the walls or the structures. So um, but given that, we have to really go to the map and we got to be fully resourced to work proactively and nintly handle the erosion situations that we've got going on. Um, not the just the emergency situations, but the long range projects. Um, and that's, you know, one of the key reasons that I'm advocating for more staff to be devoted to these areas. We can't just be, you know, that staff needs to help advance these projects. Our staff currently is stretched thin and they need help and they need somebody with a staff background that asks the right questions and um make sure that we're not making expensive mistakes.
I guess he wants the one that it was.
Thank you. Uh, I'm all for property rights also, but I'm the property rights if somebody's following the car along. So you know, that's, you know, you can have old copyrights in the world which shitfall of law are doing, most of the property rights in S T R. For that, of course, we started talking about if we take whether it's legal or not, but what are we with camps? And how you take this person over to this person without without affecting this person. So that's an aside. Um, the U S Army Corps of Engineers, a beneficial use project they brought up just a year ago on ones, hasn't happened yet. I would not want to put our beaches in the hands of the U of of the Army Corps of Engineers. Folly Beach haven't. Some other businesses have had to have become severe erosion. They've experienced jet some years. So I understand that, that it looks like, you know, the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, we have our own beach re-nourishment project in place. If we start spending our money, the re-nourished beaches collectively, uh, Army Corps of Engineer may never even get here to do a project. Because we're spending money, including beaches and uh.
Sure.
Yeah, you can roll. How's that go? Time's up. Laurie, Laurie, I appreciate it. Good try.
So, what's your, your?
I just, quickly, so the seawalls on Bali are because of the jenny and 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 Isle of Palms is different, but go back and watch it. They didn't say seawalls up. But I will tell you, when I was a kid, we would have long vegetated dune. I would have to take my bicycle across a long wooden boardwalk to get to the beach. Storm after storm, erosion, 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 no proactive plan, and now this is where we are. I look at this as an opportunity. I might be a bushy-tailed thirty six year old, but I see an opportunity here. And the opportunity is for us to have a sustainable plan to maintain our beaches with lush vegetated dunes. If there's a seawall, I don't think the government should get in the way as long as it's not impacting the gov- impacting the environment and impacting the daydreams homeowners. But let's not pretend that we're the only beachside community in America, okay? There are solutions out there. We just have to have the will to do it. And like I said, I'm running to act, to do something, to roll my sleeves up and to help solve this problem.
Susan, that you are in management.
Oh, gee.
Where are you going? Okay. All right, we've got, I'd like to get through as far as possible. Uh, but the current seat in council, which member or members, including the mayor, must closely align with your platform advocacy or vision for our home.
And that starts with. I am not a politician, so I'm going to do my best to be a politician with its answer. Um, I am running on a platform to unify the island, okay? I've met with almost every single person on city council. I can find something that I agree with basically every single one of them. And what I will tell you is, is that we all have the same goals. We all want a good place to raise our family. We want a good place to to live our lives. And at the end of the day, we just disagree on how to get there. We really do. And I want you all to understand that these last elections that have been so divisive, we don't have to do that anymore. We can run as neighbors. We can all come together and we can find where we look great. So I'm not going to name names and try to divide people. I'm going to say that I can work with every single one of them and I can find common ground with every single one of them. If you want to manage our growth and development, I can talk to you. If you want to help save our beaches and save our economy, I can talk to you. If you want to help get us into a financially healthy situation, we can pay for these expensive capital projects. I can talk to you. And if you want to be united and help our island thrive, and I can talk to you. And I think every single person who's on city council agrees with me. And I hope that I can have a seat at that table and I can help move us forward. There's a lot of projects happening this next year that I think if we have a fresh voice, somebody who's new, somebody who's going to bring new ideas, I really think that we can move forward and have a better future together.
So. For a eat. Should be a shop. Cut this out.
Well, that's an interesting question, and it's just not the lens that I look at, look through when I'm looking at working with people. Um, I don't pick them apart and figure out what their platform is. What I recognize is that everybody that I've served with on city council has brought something to the table, um, their background, expertise. It's actually part of the reason when we had a discussion about reducing the number of council members from nine to seven, that um, I was not in favor of that. Because I could look at all of the venues that I was serving with and those and they brought something to our discussions that was valuable. So um, I I can't pick one particular person. Um, I just, I respect what everybody brings and I try to be very independent. I I try to make my own decisions. I like to collaborate with people. I like to get their opinions. But at the end of the day, I'm going to take all that information. I'm going to dig into the details. I'm going to do my homework and I'm going to make a decision based on what I think is best for our our community and our island. Um, and and certainly I keep these about and listening to constituents and what they bring to the table as well. So many amazing ideas and conversations that I've been having with constituents through the campaigning process. Um, so the best part about the campaigning process is I ask people, you know, what are your hopes for the island? And we get into some amazing conversations. I hear about their concerns, but I also get their ideas and uh just lovely stories about we how great it is to live in this magical place, but was a a commitment to making it better for everybody.
Advice.
Voice. So, thank you, Mr. Uh, what they say is. Thank you, Steve. The question, Leanne, I gotta tell you, what is a crap question for sure. Not gonna have a good trip. Okay, so I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think any of us can find things that we agree with any council member of, you know. And there's going to be, there's going to be times you can have a meeting where you don't agree on anything. And the next time you, and you can, you agree on everything or you're going to be somewhere in the way. That's what the nature of collaboration with a council is. A council is not one person. It's not you and I, but you and I, well, in our case, nine people, including the mayor, all of an equal, equal vote and an equal voice that sit down and talk through issues. And then come to a conclusion. I could, current council, I could pick out at least one thing for every council member that I admire, you know. And so, well, even if that, uh, you know, that's, that's not going to be something that I see to, you know, that I need to closely align myself with a particular council member, council member. I'm an independent. I've always been an independent. I try to think independently, collaborate with others. I like to get a lot of feedback. You know, as part of the DNA that I had in fact in my past and my work life, that you had to do a lot of feedback. You had to have a lot of communication to get anything done when when you worked in the business and I was there. So it is something that I think that uh all of us would agree on, that no matter what, anybody, whoever gets this next seat, you know, would be willing to work with the council members, get the best result that we could. Uh, and that's, that's what I say.
Thank you. Susan, this next one. Uh, what is your, the next three are pretty specific. What is your plan to improve the Viking walking cat on Waterway Boulevard?
Next one. Well, I was laughing about this because when I started in twenty eighteen, that was in my first committee meeting, we talked about improving the Waterway Boulevard path. And what we ran into, which was super frustrating is as soon as we would recommend this as a project for county funding, we might not enough to wait about eight months before the county would decide yea or nay. And by that time we've done our budget process. So if we couldn't um go ahead and do it on our own, and this happened two years in a row, and it made me want to go talk to the county about their process. But um, that Waterway Boulevard, it's, we've been wanting to get that repaid for the longest time. And over time that we found that that project has grown in scope in terms of it's going to be widened and also is an amazing opportunity. It it sounds that that to um have some elevation. Next one. Yeah. Well, I was laughing about this because when I started in twenty eighteen, that was in my first committee meeting, we talked about improving the Waterway Boulevard path. And what we ran into, which was super frustrating, is as soon as we would recommend this as a project for county funding, we might not enough to wait about eight months before the county would decide yea or nay. And by that time we've done our budget process. So if we couldn't um, go ahead and do it on our own, and this happened two years in a row, and it made me wanna go talk to the county about their process. But um, that Waterway Boulevard, it's, we've been wanting to get that repaid for the longest time. And over time that we found that that project has grown in scope in terms of it's gonna be widened and also is an amazing opportunity, it it sounds that that to um, have some elevation that will be protective in terms of drainage and in terms of flooding, that will help protect the interior community around that top. Um, and so for that reason, it has definitely gotten uh, not on the timeline that we would like it to be, but in the end, it's going to be so helpful in protect property. Um, I just wish it had happened faster. And I ask the staff about it all the time. Where are we on that? The great news is, is that we just got a huge grant that we'll pay for. A lot of half of it, I do believe. Um, so that's wonderful. And what I really envision too, I would love to have benches where people along the way could take a break and then maybe have an opportunity to talk with their neighbors. I would love to occasionally have uh, what we call interpretive signs to talk about uh, that people could enjoy enjoy along the way that would also, you know, feature our wildlife and natural resources. And I think that would also.
White Cat.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, the the multi-use pathway for waterway, the surveying is something that's been talked about for years. Uh, I know not only Susan, Randy Bell sitting in the audience, I know that they were all talking about, I can't with councils, and Carol, I've seen some others were discussing prior to that. So it's one of those things that has been, it's been a long time coming. It's great to see that we've got the grants, that we're moving forward with it. Quite honestly, what I've seen with the plan so far, it's gonna be a great ADA compliant multi-use path. And it should, it should be something that is, that is, that is, you know, accessible for anyone who has disabilities. It should be fully accessible, desiccious, and uh, it's gonna be elevated to the point that it shouldn't uh, uh, really be uh, a piece of work there that will keep it from being flooded in the future. There's a lot of work to be done with it, but you gotta collaborate also. Wild dudes and the harbor force have certain things done to accommodate and make us all laugh. I'd say they've been very willing and open to do that. So they're committed. Uh, you know, they seem to be all the same age that we get this done. So we'll be good to see that come to pass finally. I was chair of public services facilities committee uh, last year. And it was one of the things that we started seeing coming down the road. It's good to see that Katie Myers in that same group, really starting to see it come to fruition.
Got this.
I miss.
So I'm a little nerdy about this subject because there's maps that show what happens when you go from the six foot to the seven foot working with wild dudes. And it's a little more expensive. However, we have a small window of time as wild dudes redo's redo's their golf courses. And I I'm glad that former Councilman Streetman talks about wild dudes, because I want to as well. Wild dudes should be commended for this. They are redoing their golf courses. And at the same time, they're gonna add spurs and walls. So when the sea levels rise and they come from the coastal, they're not gonna be able to come back into the residential neighborhood. And I encourage all of you all to go onto the city's website and look at these maps because it is actually very dramatic, the level of flooding that this is going to avoid. It's a little more expensive. We got some grants that were almost gonna fully cover this project, that it is gonna be more expensive because of it. However, it really is gonna help out our residents. And since I'm running on a residence first platform, I one hundred percent support that idea. It's also going to expand our walkways from four feet to eight feet. Um, our walkways on Waterway and on Palm need some work, you haven't noticed. And so this is gonna be a cosmetic upgrade as well as an infrastructure upgrade. So I fully support it. Council has not voted on this yet, so it's important for you all to know that. I think maybe at their next council meeting, they'll be voting on it. So I would encourage you all to look at the plans, reach out to your council members, and hopefully that they'll support this project while this window is open as wild dudes redo their golf courses, kind of taking back off of that project and help our residents in the interior of the island. So their roads don't flood.
Can I ask, we have time for one more? Um.
That's a good one.
Do you believe the city should move to a one hundred percent sewer system? If so, how would you convince residents of its merits and how would you pay for it? Rusty, you get this one first.
Thank you. Well, you know, I bless you all that I have a perfectly uh, working septic system and a lot of the people on the island are. But I think in the future, we would be remiss if we didn't didn't admit that at some point, we've got to be sewer'd at some point. Uh, a big part of the problem right now is our water reserve. Basically, it doesn't have infrastructure, the holiday or something like that. gotta get all that in place before you could hook up what he's gonna hook on. Uh, another another piece of it is affordability. We have a lot of people out here on fixed end nuts. Uh, believe they're not on fixed end help that can't afford to hook on good expensive sewer. We need to look at plans that would help them be able to do that should we have the capability to even do it enough anytime in the near future. Uh, so it's not like, okay, hey, we need sewer, let's do it and go for it. Hundred percent we can have it done in a year. This is a multi-year, multi-stage issue that has to be addressed. And it's gonna take a combination of not only the city, but I'll pong water sewer commission working together. That would also be good if we could, again, see if we could find some grants and something like this also from a federal state level that could help us uh, if we move forward. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a tough problem, but it's one I've heard estimated right now probably somewhere around forty-five, fifty million dollars. And that's probably in the lower register. I still, at the very end, we had, I would say, given the dates, market the way things are going. So thank you.
Josh.
So this is a complicated issue. Um, it's also the type of hookup that you have to have. You know, there's the grinders and the infrastructure to even hook up into it. Um, and I listened to Jan Anderson try to talk to me about that. And um, I looked at the map and you, we artists, look, you know, our infrastructure is outdated here. I mean, it is. All of these homes got built as development came in and we did not upgrade our infrastructure along with it. That's not our residents' fault. And I don't think we should be forcing our residents to pay the price to add because the government didn't upgrade the infrastructure along with the development. So obviously, we need grants. We need to work the layers of government to try to get this funded. We need buy-in from the residents. But until there's infrastructure to even hook up into it, with there's really nothing that we can do. So let's put this on the laundry list of very expensive projects that although we have forty-five million dollars in the bank and half of that's restricted, all of these projects are extremely expensive. So I just want you all to keep that in mind as we talk about spending and what things that we can spend our money on when we have these very important infrastructure projects. So in a perfect world, you know, everything would be free. I, my kids, I have to tell you, my son, we just got him a three D printed dragon. And he thinks it's the coolest thing in the world. But then we were heading to the lens event last week. He, he had the drive he was in. He couldn't wait to show his friends. And he goes, wait, can we three D print money? And I said, no, that's not how that works. I'd love to be able to three D print money, but we can't do that. So we have to be really creative. We have to work the layers of government and we've got to act. And at the end of the day, if this is what our residents want, they can hook up themselves. The island can do that.
I mean, no.
Thank you. And um, so when I was first at council, I was actually um, on the public works committee and was the liaison to the water and sewer commission for a year. And we were actively talking about uh, you know, septic tanks and trying to get more of our population onto water and sewer. And there's many reasons why we want to do that. But really, I mean, the key one is public health because again, as we have flooding and and the sea level rise plan that has been introduced, um, points out that a lot of the places where we have the worst flooding pockets are also where we have a lot of septic tanks. And so I'm gonna give a shout out to our timer, uh, Laura, who has uh, is on the environmental advisory committee that um, we've discussed already. And it's really using that opportunity to go after some funding, to 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 reach out to the water and sewer commission and and collaborate with them to go after funding so that we can help people who maybe can't afford to have the line built directly to them because they're off and far away from where the sewer reaches. Um, to look at maybe, I think ideally, well, ideally, everybody would eventually get on sewer, but it is very complicated. There's and there's a maze of different lines out there that are small, that can't be used by everybody. Um, so you really need to have to have some group thing working to get people working together. And if we can target some of those hotspots, I think that's where we need to go first, is to work with these people who have septic tanks who are vulnerable to drainage issues. Because when those flooding issues happen, it's not just their problem in their backyard, but it is a problem for everybody um, that lives around them that might be walking through it. It's uh, I, if I public health issue, I just want to emphasize, you're talking about raw sewage getting into our community and those situations. And that's not healthy for any.
She.
That's all the questions that we're gonna be able to get in in this time period. So I'm going to let each one of you have three minutes. Final, if there's anything you want to touch on, we don't get to ask, go ahead and do that now. I'm gonna start with you, Josh.
Oh, was that something I said? Oh, I'm gonna thank you all for being here tonight. I didn't answer all your questions or if you have other questions. I'll be right back here a week from tomorrow from nine thirty to eleven um, to do a post or on the, so come stop in again next week on Tuesday, the twenty second from nine thirty to eleven. And for those of you who've been to some of my other events, you've heard the stories about the seagulls. And I will spare the whole story and just tell you that seagulls like to take your food. And although we live in a beautiful place, sometimes it can be kind of messy. I'm gonna tell you another story tonight, a story of a place that started out as an uneven fishing island, a story that of a place where kids used to camp out under the stars, eating the fish that they caught during the day, a story of a place where the first submarine sailed past on his way to sink the first battleship, a story of a place that seen tragedy, it seen hurricane, and that's come together to rebuild, a story of a place that hosted famous golf stars and tennis stars, a story of a place where famous television shows are filmed, a story of a place that we call home, Isle of Palms. We've come a long way from the hunting and fishing island. We just need a lot of development, a lot of growth. And I'm here to manage that development and manage that growth. And we can do that with reasonable short-term rental reform and no more public parking, not in wild dudes, not out of wild dudes, no more public parking on the island. And in fact, we need to have paid public parking. We can do that by saving our beaches. And so when visitors come here, there's a beautiful beach for them to go at. So our short-term rentals aren't having to refund them money because there's no beach in front of their houses, a place where we can balance our budget and fund these very important infrastructure projects and a place where we can all come together and truly thrive. We live in a small community. We're neighbors. We're friends. We can come together and we can have a better path forward. We can leave the divisive elections in the past and we can move forward to a better future together. I'm asking for your vote. I'm asking for your support. I'm asking you to take a chance on me. I'm a fresh face. I have new ideas. I'm motivated and I want to help the city. The only way I can do that is with your vote. So again, please vote for me on November fifth, when you go to the ballot box and think, are we gonna move forward? Are we gonna move forward together? Are we gonna manage this growth? Are we gonna save our beaches? Are we gonna balance our budget? I hope that I've earned your support tonight. If not, I hope over the next few weeks I can earn your support then. Thank you all again very much for coming here.
Um, I love this community and I think it's incredible the level of engagement that I see that this room is filled as much as it is. And I don't know if you know this, but I was checking on voter turnout. Um, and seventy-seven percent of our population, our voters, turned out for the last presidential election. That's awesome. And and fifty-seven percent turned out for our last um, municipal election. Also awesome. Um, and so I think that's so important and to our to our democratic process. And sometimes it gets messy, but in the end, it's all very important conversations that we need to have. Um, and so one thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I helped shape the city's current strategic vision, and that's to become, to be a welcoming and environmentally conscious and resilient coastal community committed to enhancing the quality of life for those who come here to live, work, and play. And that's something that the community enrichment task force that I've been serving with keeps coming back to as we met the past eight months. Um, as we're working on solutions so our island can thrive. And we're also, you know, we're facing some some big challenges. And I don't think this is the time to take a chance on um, who you select. I mean, you need to be looking for somebody who has the, has experience, who has um, you know, has lived here for thirty years. I know this island. I've served on city council. I know the issues. I'm, I will be there to listen to you and get your feedback. And I have a skill set, as we've talked about, uh, as a journalist, to really advance those issues, dig deep and make sure that we're making smart decisions um, as we move forward. And and so I'm just, I'm standing here because I have a passion for this community. I left my um, full-time job in June with the goal of doing more environmental work as well as community work, making a difference in those two key areas. Uh, because it's, I've realized that's really what drives me. And that was before I ever thought that this opportunity was going to come up. I was planning to run for city council in next year, in twenty twenty five, and maybe have a little more fun this upcoming year. But in fact, I should be, right now, I should be hiking in Zion National Park. But I canceled my vacation. Um, and canceling plans because I feel the community needs me. I feel called to do this. And um, I, I wanna make a difference for you. Um, also, if you want to learn anymore about my positions, um, you can go to my website. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, well, I left my full-time job ten years ago. And I haven't related a minute of that. Even though I lost a pretty decent paycheck in the process. But what I found over the last ten years since I've been retired from that paid job is I've been able to fill my time by doing things in the community, things that I was, I was passionate about. And I finally gravitated to serving on council. I had some friends that taught me how to run for council the first time. I had no intention of even doing. And uh, I got elected and I served the four years and I, quite frankly, the ups and downs, all the trials and tribulations of COVID, I enjoyed it. I enjoyed what we did. Did we make some mistakes? You know, we did. You know, did we've done things better? You can always look back and say, okay, this, we could have done this, we could have done that. That's the beauty of hindsight. Though we don't have the luxury of being able to do that and go back and uh, correct those kind of things. Pretty much all of my major goals were, whether it's drainage or beach nourishment and re-nourishment, um, city hall, uh, traffic and safety, we pretty much touched on those on all those subjects tonight. So I won't go back into that, those. But I will say something in regards to the strategic plan that both Susan and I were part of and put that together a few years ago, and some others in the audience here too. And we put that together. And uh, Susan had mentioned the the vision statement, which is a good one. And our mission statement is to be the most sustainable, family-friendly beach community in South Carolina. But honestly, I think we already are. But you know, can we improve it? Yeah, I think we can. You know, it's uh, one of those things that we can continue to work on. I uh, I think that uh, going forward, collaboration is going to be necessary with all the council that we're working with difficult issues. I know that Susan and Josh both share the same thoughts in regards to that. And I think any one of us three could fill that gap in regards to bringing something to council that would be that would be helpful and to help this, this island become an even better island to live, work and play. You know, we have a city seal that has four Latin words on it. So loggers, doctors that understand Latin, I had to look it up. I had to Google it. So one of the words is health. Then you have work. Then you have training. And then you have safety. All of those are on our city seal. And those are the things that we need to look at and we ought to concentrate on. You know, the health of our beaches, the health of our people, the health of our marshes, work, safety, maintenance, public works, support our island businesses, value our employees, training, education to our visitors, you know, take out what you bring in. You know, don't leave it, you'll leave it the way you found it. Treat it like your own home. And it's safety, arrest its first approach, you know, stay with our two thousand fifteen parking plan and, uh, succession plan to assure continuity of our valuable employees. I ask for your vote, only on November the fifth to fill the vacancy. Thank you.
I thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I wanna thank Joe and Kathy Bustos for coming out. Thanks y'all. That's it. Thank y'all very much.